And this has been. Good timing. And.
Need a motion?
Is there any other additional fees at this time?
Yeah.
Just a free.
It's an annual fee.
Thank you.
And it and it's been advertised since the last.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Entertain a motion to accept it's a.
Still moved.
An ordinance. Alright, so moved in second, moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion is good, five zero.
Thank you. The next thing and my last thing, we received correspondence from Mr. Colagreco. He represents the developer of the Kmart Thorndale Real Estate LLC is their name. They are in the process of redeveloping it with a Lomax and an Audi shopping center. The board approved a conditional use on November 11th, 2021, which allowed for the redevelopment of that shopping center. One of the conditions of conditional use was condition number four. It indicated that certain improvements had to be installed before the use and occupancy permit for Lomax will be issued. The applicant has asked if the board would agree to allow Ray to issue a temporary use and occupancy. Most of the work is completed. The one condition, it referenced improvements on the conditional use plan. And if you recall, the conditional use plan, in addition to the Lomax store, it also has an Audi on the other half of the Kmart. And some of the improvements that are specific to the Audi were shown on that plan. I have to say, I don't think it was my intention to say that they needed, didn't probably think that through enough. Because it is being phased in terms of how they're doing it, they're they're always focusing on getting the Lomax up and going and occupied. The Audi was gonna follow and in short, short time. Audi unfortunately has had a little bit of a delay. They didn't get to start their construction as quickly as they wanted to. In addition to that, there they have, whoever doing the Audi fit out is a different entity than the developer. So the developer who received the conditional use approval is the one doing all of the improvements on the parking lots and the driving, drive-through, everything. Not the drive-through, excuse me, the access lanes, the sidewalks, et cetera. So the Audi in looking at what they need to do to build the building and fit out the building, they are saying, hey, you know, our construction vehicles may get in the way of the work that you would do. It doesn't make sense for you to re-strike the parking lot, put in the sidewalks, et cetera. So all they're asking is that, that all the other items listed in this correspondence have been done. So the the inlets along the front of the building have been done. The repairing, the repatching, the potholes and the ditches in the rear driveway, that's done. The rear intersection driveway, that's done, except for, I think there's two or three signs that need to be installed in the process. And then the loading dock in the back, which should be constructed and completed by the 15th, so that's two days, three days from now. The only thing that isn't done are things in front of the Audi that they're asking that that be delayed until the Audi store is done. Then the developer will come in and finish that. So Ray, what they're asking for is approval to issue a temporary use and occupancy. They'd like to occupy the building, I think, what, a week or two? And then you wouldn't get a permanent UNO until everything that's shown on that plan in front of the Audi is completed. So that's the request. Ray and I didn't feel that we could get that approval. We wanted you to be aware of it and to make sure that you're comfortable with it.
Appreciate that.
How long is a temporary UNO for?
That, that's a good question. The, the, I would probably do it. Have some more conversation with them and find out like what the anticipation is for the Audi. But most likely, I, I would do it either 90 days or, you know, something like that. And then if, as long as Aldi continues to move forward, I would do another 90 days. Aldi has went full-blown since.
Oh, yeah, then it's got it out.
And they, as a matter of fact, they even already started the sidewalk along. So it's not like they're trying to get away with anything. It was just, there wasn't a lot of, none of us, I think, had the forethought to realize that if Aldi was a little delayed, anything that was required to be done on the exterior would be completely damaged and it'd be worthless to do it. And I'll give you another example, like land, there's landscaping requirements. Well, on any project, if bad weather comes by time they're switched with that landscaping, we usually do a temporary UNO or something like that until we know it can be planted and grow. So that, to me, this would be nothing, you know, be similar, nothing different.
Mr. Colagreco's letter actually says they anticipate the work being done by January 15th. So they themselves are expecting that the temporary UNO would only need to go until mid-January. So that's 90 days, I'm sure would work.
Okay.
But if I, I don't know if we necessarily need a motion, other than that the consensus is that you're fine with Ray proceeding in that manner.
Commissioners? Any questions on this? You just need us to vote to approve?
Let us know that that's acceptable.
All in favor to extend a temporary UNO for 90 days till January 15th, you say?
Aye.
Aye?
You're good with that? Okay.
Josh?
I'm a no, but that's fine.
He's a no. Okay, four to one? You can, yeah, 90-day temporary UNO? I did have a question on the back end of that section.
Yeah.
Last time I drove by, maybe they fixed it since, but you had some huge pits that they dug out by the foundation of the building?
Yeah, so, so all that's still part of some construction that they're doing. They did, the, the section that is there on their side of that access drive, they cut a big section out and did a, a permanent patch. Some of what they're still cutting out is for the trash compactor, the loading dock. So they're, I mean, it's gonna continue to be an active construction zone for quite a while until Aldi's done.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Camp. Have a great evening.
Thanks so much, Crystal.
Thank you.
All right, next we have the township engineer.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Carl Schmidt with Arrow Consulting.
Carl, good to see you, Carl.
Hi. Two brief items on the agenda. The first one is in regards to a payment recommendation. You can see in your packet, it is a payment to Long's Asphalt. The work is done and this pay request is for 88% of the full contract amount. There's an addition, that's the 360,000.
363?
360 even, seven, 360, 747. There's an additional 2,600 added due to an increase in asphalt material costs that they're granted through the contract. That total brings it to the 363, 394 and 58 cents. So the full amount on this pay request is the 363, 394 and 58 cents. This is payment request number one. And the next meeting we will probably have, or next month, rather, will be the final full-term payment request number two for the project. But this is just for the partial payments that they've completed. I wanted to pause for any questions or if there's any discussion on motions.
Commissioners, any questions? And what straits were involved on this? Paving?
I don't know. I would have to get back to you on that. This was the full 2022 road program. And I don't have that on my list.
I'm just buying some time because Commissioner Evans stepped away.
Yeah.
So, so you can send us later.
I can. I will.
We did a portion of Loomis. The top section there, South Park. I don't remember where else. And we also took care of the Spackman Farm. I don't know if that was part of this. Okay, and if you want to just go over the James R. Kennedy excavating and paving? Payment?
Pardon?
You can just go over the next one.
Sure. Item two is a brief update on bids. We held pre-bids for four of the stormwater projects related to FEMA reimbursement. That included North Barley Sheaf Drainage, Barley Sheaf Swale, North Bailey Road, and South Lloyd Avenue Stream Bank. Those four have a conclusion date for bidding right before the next meeting on the 27th. And we will have the information tabulated with our recommendation for you at your next meeting on the 27th for those four projects.
Okay. Perfect. And is this not on the agenda? The consideration for payment for application number four?
He did. I think he went over that already.
Yeah, that was the first one, application for payment.
Oh, okay.
Did I flip them off?
And then I apologize. Okay. Yeah, I, I think you'd flip them.
Okay.
And I'm just reading down my chart here. All right, I'll check with the guy that told me to do the pay request first.
I can wait?
Yeah, I just wanted to wait for Mark for, for the vote, if you don't mind.
Sure, if they had questions or Ray might be able to answer some of them.
He went outside? Oh. Okay. Well, we do have a quorum anyway. It's entertain a motion to approve the payment for application number one for Long, Long's Asphalt in the amount of 363,394 and 58 cents.
So moved.
So moved. Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Motion's good, four. Zero. Okay. And then consideration for the payment, application number four, and that is the James R. Kennedy Excavating and Paving in the amount of 49,709 and 70 cents. And this is for the Fisherville Roads. All in favor? Or, I need a motion?
Still moved.
So moved?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That was a yes from Josh, even though he's muted, so that's four zero.
Sorry.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sticking around, Carl?
Question?
Oh, yes, Tony. You have a question? Please come up to the podium. Doing okay? Where are you?
Yeah.
What happened? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, oh, right here. When you get home, you make a really big.
Oh, gosh.
And just get me to my car. Sorry about that.
That's fine. She got her bag?
Yes.
Okay.
First thing I, again, this is a, I have to give complete credit, this is an Abby Swan initiative.
Abby!
Abby, right.
Abby Superstar Swan. This is an initiative that she has been working on to do a wildflower meadow project. Behind the township building, we actually have a field back there that we owned, that we got a part of, a development as their open space. It is deeded to the township. Abby, as we know, is a master watershed steward and is always looking for ways to beautify the township with native plants that help with stormwater controls and MS4. So on the 22nd, from 1 to 3 p.m., we are gonna be back here and we are gonna be planting seeds to grow the new meadow. So they received $1,000 worth of native seeds from PPL Electric. And then they got additional funding for educational materials, signs and benches through the Penn State Extension. So we are also looking for, for seed, seed sower, so to speak. Anybody interested, we will be one to three, meet here behind the township building on the 22nd. Propose budget meeting dates and final dates of the year. I had sent an email earlier and I just want to make sure that the Board of Commissioners has those dates marked down. That November 17th will be a regular meeting. November 30th will be the budget presentation. And December 22nd will be the budget adoption. Just want to make sure that we have, everybody's clear on those dates. I know it's really hard in November and December. You know, we have so much going on with holidays and travel. But just want to make sure. So it is.
That's Wednesday, November 30th.
Yes. December 1st, we have someone that has a birthday, so.
Wonder who that could be, Josh?
No idea.
We won't be having it.
All right, so it's two meetings in November, November 17th, but the 30th is just a budget presentation, or are we holding a full meeting?
It is completely up to the board. You, you give me feedback on what you wish to do. It makes no difference to me. You know. And for December, it will be, December 22nd will be putting it up for advertisement. I can get it into the paper for December 1st and adopting it. I mean, we could do it as early as the 21st. I'm, I'm putting an extra day in there just in case something would happen that the advert, you know.
December 21st?
Yes.
It's a Wednesday, it's a historical commission.
Okay, then the 22nd, I know we try to keep our meetings this, the Thursdays. You know, it is up to the board if, if, I, I, we could do that as, we're only required to have one meeting a month. We do two meetings a month, but, you know.
We're still meeting on the 8th, or we planning on skipping that?
I would say planning on skipping that.
Because we're meeting the 30th?
22nd, yeah. Yeah, I mean, really, there's not much that's gonna happen because I would be putting the packet together in two days. So there's, so I, I would suggest we just kind of have a regular meeting. And from, you know, 6 to 7:30 would be budget presentation. You know, there's not much that's gonna happen between Wednesday and Thursday for me to make a packet on Friday. I'm willing to do it, though, if, if you're so interested.
I guess it all depends on what's coming through. It could be an exciting month, or it could be boring. So, yeah, well, we'll wing it.
Let's go for boring.
The most important thing is making sure we have that budget properly approved, advertised and adopted.
Yeah. So, and again, it is the holiday. You guys put a lot of time in all year long. We all get pretty burnt out in October and November here, so having a late December is kind of a.
Wouldn't be nice.
Yeah. I hate even pushing the budget that far. Between Cato and Thanksgiving, I can't seem to.
I know. I'll be gone on the 17th.
You won't be here on the 17th. 17th of December?
No, no, November.
Oh, okay.
You already knew that.
Yeah, that one I'm aware of.
Yeah.
So, everybody okay with those dates? The last thing is, and again, this is another Abby Superstar Swan initiative. She has been applying for grants feverishly, trying to get engineering and design money, which is very difficult to get for the Beaver Creek Trail. She was finally successful. We talked about it at a budget meeting Monday night. We got a $50,000 grant from DCD. Township will be matching it with $15,000. I just wanted the board to be formally aware of that.
Great, great job, Abby.
All right. Thank you very much. Which ones did we get through here?
So we still have not received, we, the, the first ordinance was done. We still have not received the information on the mapping for those flights. So that is still tabled.
Okay.
So you can, if you so wish, you can move on to minutes.
Sounds good to me. All right, next on the agenda, approving the Board of Commissioner minutes from September 29th. Commissioners, any questions? additions, corrections, if so, or if not, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain as I wasn't at the meeting.
Motion approved, four with one upstand. Next, we have general check run, 48,968 to 49,0045. And manual check run at 280 to 282. Commissioners, any questions on the check run?
No.
Not entertain a motion to approve the checks?
So moved.
So moved?
Second.
Second. And moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Checks have been approved, five zero. Board and Commissions, first up, park and rec.
Good evening. Just wanted to share again, we have like a host of events that are coming up for the month of October. And beginning on October the 22nd, as Mrs. Denny had just shared about the meadow seed, seedling workshop that'll be here at the township. And we're looking for volunteers. That event will take place again on October 22nd at 1 o'clock p.m. here at the municipal building. We'll meet here. I'm sure Abby and others will be on staff to direct everyone to the workshop and into the time when we will sow the seeds. Also in October, on the 29th, we will have our annual Township Halloween party at Municipal Park. So we'd like to get all our little characters together and all our little fun events. And we'll be having scavenger hunts and contests and treats for all the little children and the big kids, too. So come on out on the 29th. We'll start at 1 o'clock at the park.
Where are you going, Azpul?
Could be any night. And also on October 31st, Township will have trick or treat. I believe it starts from 6:30, 8:30, if I'm correct. I may have to. October 31st. I don't know what day that falls on.
October 31st is a Monday.
Monday.
It's on a Monday?
What is it, 6 to 8?
6 to 8 p.m. And parents, as you have heard, and just be careful when you're out trick or treating before your children, eat any candy. Make sure you take it home, examine it, because we've been having some incidences, you know, throughout, maybe not our township, but reports of children being given candy that, medicine or fentanyl or whatever these crazy people are doing that resembles like Skittles and other special treats that children often enjoy. So just be careful and make sure that your children aren't eating anything until you examine it yourself. That's kind of somebody's way of playing tricks and it's not good. Also, I don't know if anybody came out last night, but Thorndale, the volunteer fire company, they had an open house and scavenger hunt. And I'm glad I had the opportunity to stop by. It was delightful. It was a beautiful night. Lots of children were out and families. It was nice even myself getting the opportunity to pretend to drive a 1939 fire truck. That was so cool. And, you know, had some family members come along and try to coach one of them to be a volunteer. So they're always looking for volunteers and, I don't know, once he put on that fire suit, he had his head going for a minute. So I hope he takes it serious in light of the fact that he has three other friends from school that are volunteers at the fire station. It was very nice. And they'll be coming out to my facility in another week or so because we have little people that couldn't venture out. And so they're doing a lot of educational things, the fire company. I, I like what they do for the community, the schools, the daycares. So, hey, kudos to Thorndale Fire Company. It was a well-attended educational event. Very nice. We also have upcoming events at the Coastal Library, which we do fund, so make sure you get up to their book sale. That's gonna be Friday, Saturday and Sunday this week from 10 a, 10 to 6 on Friday, 9 a.m. to 6 p.m. on Saturday. And again, Sunday from 12 to 5. And they had a preschool nature explorer called Creepy Creatures, where they actually have, had live animals. And that was for a program for children from the ages of two through five. So they're doing a lot of great things and they have a tail wagging tutor coming up. I guess that's tomorrow, on the 14th. And the 21st and the 29th at 11 o'clock. And it's come to the library where you can meet our corgi friends from the Therapy Dogs International. And all ages are welcome. So look at their website because the Coastal, as well as the Downingtown Library, which we fund, they have excellent programs for families, for children, and now for pets. So it's just a great place to hang out when you're looking for something to do and you don't have to spend money. So, you know, take advantage of some of these nice things that we do invest in here at the township. Outside of that, I think that's all I have to say. And in regards to COG, we really have no new business. I think their new business now is trying to get all the municipalities, you know, like not just to pay your dues, but, you know, to show up, be supportive, let's get more involved. It's under new administration, so it's, it's a lot of new dynamics changing. And, you know, their big feature is getting this, this dog shelter or pet shelter up off the ground and they're looking for volunteers. So hopefully that will happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. It's gonna be hard to follow that. And municipal authority, that would be myself, or the sewer department. Ouch. Chester County Sports Arena, they have a new gravity sewer that's been completed and the developer is currently working on final testing of the system prior to making their connection with our I and I program. EQIC's Integrity finished the 2022 Phase 4 Interceptor Repair Projects on October 10. The 2023 Phase 5 Interceptor Repair Project bid documents are scheduled to be uploaded onto PennBid on October 14. That'll be the final stage of our I and I program along the main interceptor, interceptor of our township. For DARA, we have sit over, sent over a copy of the Township's Act 537 Plan. And this was sent over to DEP for a draft technical review on September 19th. And on October 5th, a copy was also sent to the Chester County Health Department for review and comment. Also, DARA is working, currently working on I and I program on the interceptor that runs through the Downingtown Borough, which consists of cleaning, televising, crowding several segments that were observed leaking groundwater. Just tightening up the systems. And next is the Fire Board. We have not met since the last time, so there is no update for that. Moving on to Historical Commission, always exciting there. Come on, I got the boring stuff.
You keep things moving.
I'm all about flow.
Flow.
Scott, did you like that one? Flow.
The Historical Commission met Wednesday, September 21st at 7 p.m. We had a quorum of members as well as a few guests, both in person and on Zoom. Representatives from Alfield came to discuss their plans for 4060 Edges Mill Road to respond to the Historical Commission's concerns about their sketch plan and address ways to protect the bucolic nature of the historic Edges. and address ways to protect the bucolic nature of the historic Edges Mill Milling District and its structures. They presented a new plan with a stone facade wrapping the building entrance and a new, less obtrusive, more earth toned color palette that softens the visual imprint on the surrounding area. It was a very productive meeting. They requested we provide them with any further comment within two weeks, which we did. Uh Catherine Quilman was scheduled to uh meet with us, but she was rescheduled due to our need to meet with Allville. We heard from all of our subcommittees. Spackman Farm uh reported on completion of the driveway and talks regarding a homecoming ribbon cutting. Marketing and social media reported on a feature article about the Historical Commission and Spackman Farm coming in the fall issue of the Chester County Historic Preservation Network ledger. Historical Preservation reported that the historic resource histories were nearly complete on all sixties resources and that they were incorporating comments from the Pennsylvania uh State uh Historic Preservation Office to the ordinance and the entire package would soon be transmitted to the Township's solicitor. Lloyd Farm reported on informal cons- conversations with state officials about ways to possibly fund preservation and reuse. Finance reported an expenditure of seventy five dollars for a one-year membership to Preservation P A. Our next scheduled meeting will be next Wednesday, October nineteenth. This time, we will actually be joined by noted Chester County historian and author Catherine Quilman. Will be sharing her expertise on the Underground Railroad and Callan and Lloyd Farm. Our meetings are hybrid, so you can join us right here live or from home on Zoom. And remember, we're doing big things and accomplishing big things needs lots of help. Consider joining the Historical Commission to make our past a real part of our future.
Mark, could we also add about the open house on Saturday, November thirteenth?
I mentioned that in the very beginning.
Okay, did they get the date and time and everything?
Uh yes.
And what, next week, what time uh does the meeting start for the Historical?
Seven P M.
Seven P M. I think I'll chime in this time.
Please do.
Yes. Alright.
There's always a seat for you.
Yeah. Alright, next, Lincoln Highway.
So as Mark alluded to earlier, um the school district uh finally did pass the resolution needed to approve Lerta. Um we have that in hand now. Um we have transferred our resolution and the school district's resolution to the county and are awaiting a date to be on the uh Commissioner's agenda to finally enact uh the county uh the final piece of that and Lerta will be active after that. Uh Mark's been in touch with uh Representative Frillotten and uh s- some uh R cap money has been discussed as well as uh uh Economic Development Zone. Um and I will be reaching out to the Chester County Economic Development Council to see how we can market uh our Lerta as well as hopefully soon a finished zoning um code of update.
Thanks, Josh.
Thanks, Josh. Appreciate that.
Fantastic.
Wanted to let you know that we had an open house and a tour of the golf course.
Oh.
By the golf carts. And the lots going on. Our next meeting will be ten twenty four at five thirty at the golf club.
Excellent, thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that was an excellent tour.
That, that was fun.
Feel for uh, I, i- it's such a beautiful course.
Yes.
And it's larger than I had thought, too.
It's gorgeous and expansive and I think uh if Paul Mullen were a cat, he would have exhausted a couple of his lives by riding in a cart up and down the hills with me driving.
Uh I'll need a better driver next time. And we, we did enjoy that. Alright, next on the agenda, we have additional business.
Mister Chair, I move that we waive the agenda to uh consider appointing a couple of uh new people to our committees.
So moved. Alright, moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
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 What are we doing on this?
Yeah, uh the two candidates that we interviewed this evening that we were very familiar with.
Yes.
Uh we wanted to appoint them, uh just to get things rolling.
Two were then, were they?
First one was to appoint Donna De Prinzio, Dr. Donna De Prinzio to the Historical Commission.
Now, and what group was that?
Historical.
Historical?
Historical.
And the other one?
Hearing one at a time.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we can do one. We have a motion for Donna De Prinzio to be uh approved for the uh Historical Commission.
Done, moved, okay.
Well, your second, okay. So we move by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to appoint Christine Parr to the zoning hearing board.
Second.
Done, moved.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and second. Denise can figure that one out. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Alright, excellent.
They're both in attendance on Zoom. Welcome. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Alright, uh back to the additional business. We have a consideration authorize uh the purchase of a new truck-mounted leaf collector with a twenty five cubic yard debris container from Stephenson Equipment in an amount of two hundred and thirty two thousand, six hundred and ninety four and thirty one cents. Uh Ms. Denny, we did get a, uh receive a grant towards this purchase?
That is correct. Hold on, let me get the document.
Okay. And, and Scott's not allowed to drive this, right?
Am I?
We all can, we all can drive. So leaf. The grant was a hundred and ninety three thousand dollars. You know, and of, of course, over time, everything has gone up. Um, you know, the, the original price we, we had put down was two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That has increased, obviously, to two hundred and thirty two thousand dollars. Um so we will have to add a little bit more to this, but it, it is still a portion of the cost for an extremely popular program for leaf collection.
And if I understand from Scott, the seventeen thousand dollar difference, we can actually apply?
Yeah, they've said in, in future grants, we can put that in there.
Okay, so we might be able to recoup.
But that's for next year.
Still a good deal.
So I, again, we need a motion authorizing the purchase of a new truck-mounted leaf collector with a twenty five cubic yard debris container mounted on an international or freightliner chassis from Stephenson Equipment in the amount of two hundred and thirty two thousand dollars, six hundred and ninety four and thirty one cents.
entertain a motion.
Done, moved.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner uh Kennedy, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, five zero. We have here a review of King's Highway Park. This, during the budget uh meetings this week, uh Commissioner Young had uh suggested that we just kind of bring this up during the uh, during this meeting, just to give an update. I don't know if you want to take that lead or Commissioner Evans?
I have something prepared, up to Josh.
I, I was just gonna say that um Mark and I need, or Mark, uh Paul and I need uh direction on what, what, what the thoughts are, where we think we're going and what, what type of money to budget. So I, I had said in the meeting that, that that we should talk to the board. Uh that way, we can get everyone's input and then move on from there. Well, Paul and I didn't want to just come up with an umbrella.
I think that's great. And uh, so let me just give everyone a little little update on what, what this is about here.
Little two-page update, alright.
Since we got a new roof on the barn and had the driveway and parking area paved at Spackman Farm, there's been a lot of speculations about the future of the farm and questions about the long-forgotten King's Highway Master Park Master Plan. This has been fueled by the efforts of the Historical Commission to host an event there. Just to be clear, the farm, its structures, and land are not yet safe for daily public access and it's gonna take a lot of dough, ray, me to get there. Serious bread that this township does not have. But we do have the opportunity to take baby steps, present to the public what they have invested in and find ways to share a small part of that beautiful property with residents. The King's Highway Park Master Plan, for those who don't know anything about it, was drafted in two thousand and seven. It called for creating an expansive public park on one side of King's Highway and a new municipal complex on the other. That plan has been on the shelf collecting dust since two thousand and eight, when the economy collapsed. When this group took office in twenty twenty, Commissioner Mullen made the mistake of mentioning that this plan existed to me. And you know, that got my attention. Y'all know me, I never met a roadblock. I didn't want to move. So I dug in. As written in two thousand and seven, the park plan is now out of date, but it can be freshened up and reimagined into something viable. Facts, the farm is currently a working farm. It's rented out every year to a farmer and those funds help uh go toward its upkeep. It would be nice to preserve the working agricultural aspect of some of the land. The original plan didn't include that. There were ideas for disc golf courses and that's probably more viable for the municipal park. I don't think anyone's still considering a massive municipal complex on the other side of, of the road. I don't as an events venue and a B and B and amphitheater and other big tickets are, items are possible over time. Not all in one bite, but the idea of passive recreation park with benches, picnic areas, and a walking trail is within reach as baby steps can lead to long jumps. There's an eleven acre parcel where the farmhouse, barn, springhouse, and other structures live. It's at the top of the driveway and once the structures are secured and safely related repair, safety repairs are made, it could be used intermittently as that first step. Again, intermittently. Historical Commission and Parks and Rec planned the upcoming homecoming ribbon cutting event for November nineteenth as a chance to highlight what has been done and put into perspective what still needs to be done. We hope to bring positive attention to this lost gem, attention that will attract dollars in the form of nonprofit contributions. But first, we need a nonprofit. We hope that this will be the first of quarterly seasonal gatherings at Spackman Farm. We hope that it we wade into the future, more resources will become available to make it safer up there and that we can have the park open more regularly. We hope that over time, we'll be able to open other sections of the park, but as I see it, we have a serious stormwater issues here that still need to be addressed. We raised taxes last year in response to Hurricane Ida and don't need to be taking on more debt for anything. Not when all we really need to do is market and advertise what we have properly. And that alone can possibly bring in funds from outside sources. There are steps being taken to secure the safety of the building so that we can one day realize our biggest dreams. But no, there is no plan to fully open the farm to the public at this time. There's no need for any township financial investment. In fact, I think that the, the Historical Commission might have enough in its budget to help with, to take care of this ribbon cutting event.
Mark, just, just uh, we, we have received some money from my place. Uh their total capital infusion is around a million dollars uh once fully outfitted. Um so we will have some money that we wouldn't have to borrow and we could get you know, some semblance of, of the park, or yeah, the park open. The other thing is the, the house, uh Abby told us it needs a new roof desperately, as well as the front porch repaired.
Um. The back half needs a new roof and the porch needs to be repaired.
So I, I see Abby online. Um I don't know if we can get her on, but Abby also had some ideas that uh Municipal Park really needs a, a master plan as well to see what um what we can do there. Uh it's just been a hodgepodge of, of things. Um so I'll let, let Abby talk, talk about.
Abby.
Okay. Uh yeah, so my suggestion, and I think Parks and Rec agreed with me, um instead of kind of our hodgepodgey approach to updating things in Municipal Park as, as they decline and the park is pretty old, a lot of the infrastructure is pretty old. Um we thought maybe it would make sense at this point to try to get some grant funding to do a master park plan for Municipal Park, um because one has not existed. We have one for Lloyd and we have one for King's Highway Farm Park and not one for Municipal. So um that might help us, us plan a more kind of cohesive park plan, adds new elements of things that people have expressed interest in since that park is sort of the focal point, at least from, for our events. Um it might be nice to do some updates. So that was, that was where I was coming from with that, but um yeah, I, we, if we had unlimited funds, we, we could do all the parks and all the things. But that's, uh and, and that also the trail project as well. So those are sort of my three, three priorities here that I think we might have to make some choices between, so. Are there specific questions I can answer?
I guess, Abby, um how the porch is in pretty bad shape, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. Um and Ray's still on, but he um, he walked around, him and the chief uh with Mark and Tom and I. I think the, the porch, I think, was a priority, the roof. Um and then also there are some structural issues on like the sides of the barn itself that need to be addressed, um missing planks and things like that. I don't know if they're structural, I shouldn't have said that, but at the very least cosmetic.
So we, we, Paul and I, as you can see now, we need some direction on what to spend and, and where. You know, we can um look at using some of the, the funds from my place to, to do that, or we can save that to either implement a master plan at uh Municipal Park or save that as a down payment towards the, the Griffith Farm uh Park, or Spackman Farm, I should say.
Yeah.
Those funds have to be used for?
Open space.
Oh, oh, well, if that's what they're for, then.
Right?
Yes, I believe they're in the open space fund right now.
Yeah. Um Kristen suggested that I get uh some advice from one of the engineers about potential costs for those updates to Spackman Farm, so hopefully someone will get back to me um really soon before you guys need those numbers, just to have um when you're making those decisions. Uh
Unfortunately, I, I, I would be sure to say it's gonna come in over nineteen thousand dollars to fix the roof.
Okay.
And while the problem is, we have to bid it then.
Yeah.
And that's what happened to us with the barn is when we went and got kind of just quotes, it was around seventy five thousand. When we had to actually bid it, we had to do formal specs and engineering. So, you know, that, that's what, you know, Abby and I were kind of trying to come up with a good strategy of how to address this. Um, you know, also what comes into there is, is the prevailing wage comes in, it, it just, it it is what it is. This is the world we live in. It, it, you know, we gotta follow it all. Um so anyways, I, Abby and I discussed that and we were talking about, you know, getting some of those investigative numbers. Um Josh is right, though. There, there is a pile of money there from my place. It, you know, it's to be used for open space. I, I don't see why there's any reason why we could not um take, and, and, you know, Mark, I think you know with me, if we're gonna do it, let's just do it right and let's do the whole roof, not a part of it. You know, there's no reason that we couldn't take that money, replace that roof, and pay for a master plan for Municipal Park.
Just, uh in terms of the master plan, um I think we could get it all paid for by grants. There are quite a few grants you can apply for, for that exact thing. Um so that I'm not so much thinking would need expenditure at this point, maybe a small match. Um
I think when we did the Lloyd, or the uh Spackman Farm uh master plan, I think the township put three thousand into that. The rest of it was paid for by Vision Partnership Grant as well as a grant from Pico.
Right. So I wouldn't worry about that part so much.
It's the implementation of
Exactly.
That becomes the issue.
Right.
And, and we've already agreed that we want to spend the fifteen thousand dollar max. And and we've already agreed that we want to spend the fifteen thousand dollar match to do the the D C D grant to start on Beether Creek Trail. So so, you know, hitting the the big next project really is is getting the the house secure. Um, so I I think that's where we, you know, with board's blessing, that's probably where we need to move.
So our our thought the other night was if we can get the roof and secure the the building itself, get the porch done because people are gonna want to walk on the front porch. Uh, we could then open it just as you kind of drive up there and you can walk around a little bit and, you know, it's open dust till dawn. And um then we start to to build on that um and see what popularity is where we are. Um, then possibly, you know, the farmer plants right to the edge of the property now, so it doesn't allow you to really walk the entire property. Um, we would have to talk about shrinking the size of what the farmer uh plants uh in order to do that.
Now, we are using the farmer's money to pay off the uh the roof. That that was the design. I think we set up five years for the repayment.
Yeah, the other option is we can take the money that we just got from um my place and pay off the roof now.
Do we save interest on interest or do we have to have, do we have a late?
I'd have to see if there's an, there probably isn't because it was their traditional line of credit, um, but it's something we need to look into.
Or the other thing is we could, if if the if the roof project is expensive on the the um the house, we could use the funds in the the um open space fund and pay that off as as it goes and it would just come out of the open space fund. Or we could pay for it all out of there, or we could, you know, put it in the general fund, like whatever, whatever everybody's prerogative is. I think we need to get some more firm prices a little bit and because are we talking fifty thousand? Are we talking two hundred thousand? We talking four hundred thousand?
Probably no less than one fifty.
So, yeah, we need, we need to know that, but um you know, I think securing the houses is important, um, because we can't make another step without that house being secured.
And the uh, I think the barn roof was one twenty, wasn't it?
One forty-seven, I want it. For some reason, that's sticking in my head.
And the uh really could get a new chain across at the driveway because someone drove through it.
Was it you?
No, I tried to get it back up there the other day, but uh it's broke, the chain's broken.
Yeah, Tony, come on up. And I know we have a couple of hands raised in Zoom world, so that'll be next.
They were raised.
Got it, Tony.
I'm just concerned something happens to the farmer that he don't rent the property no more.
We're renting it to him. We're not gonna stop renting it.
No, I think Tony's saying if he's not gonna.
You know, suppose something happens, he moves to Florida, you know, I'm just saying, what happens? In that case, you're stuck.
Either look for another farmer or go ahead with the master plan. Because the master plan is really designed to take over where he is farming.
Yep. And the master plan did anticipate somebody growing hay. So the master plan did did envision somebody growing hay or corn or, you know, soybean in between the trails. Um, even though it, if you look at the the massive mountain in the center, that was all envisioned that that would still be farmed.
I'm just saying something happens to the farmer that he don't rent the property no more. Where are you getting your income? I mean, like you said, you could rent it to another farmer, but.
Have to figure that out.
Or what happens? Is there a master plan there?
The master plan?
No.
Master plan for the world, we just don't know what it is.
It's an unknown, Tony.
It's an unknown.
It's a good question. Unknown, but yeah, we'll go with it. Uh, and before I open up to the public, what? You're throwing around the mic?
Whoa.
Yeah, Abby, I, the municipal park, I think, is very important at this point. All the kids rally in that park, so you know, whatever improvements we can do earlier than later, I I think we should jump on that. You know, the uh, the Spackman Farm is just a long-term event for us. So I just wanted to make sure that is put out there. Okay, uh, so.
Get on that.
Alright, Abby.
Yep, ASAP with the grant application. So that's unrelated, I think, to the other funding decisions.
You know what I mean? If somebody would fall, I'd drive your car back there.
He's there to meet me.
One way or another, I'll I'll have whatever he needs.
Okay. Okay, yeah, we do have a couple of folks uh with their hands raised.
Cheryl?
I think Donna had her hand up for a long time.
Yes?
Yes, Cheryl, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted, I had a question. Would you explain my place? How much money? Where did it come from and what's geared to?
So my place was, is giving us a million dollars in uh open space capital money.
And where did it come from?
From, they they were due money before the issuance of any building permits. And then they, as building permits come in, they have to pay a percentage, the other percentage per building.
It's dwell. Dwell has changed names. Dwell is no longer dwell. It's now my place.
Oh, alright, so, okay. Alright, that makes more sense. Alright, so this is money from them. Okay.
Correct.
But it can be used anywhere in the township?
For open space.
For open space, anywhere in the township?
Yes.
Oh, interesting. No, no particular um tags on it that it has to be used for one thing or another as long as it's open space?
Correct. We negotiated that with them that we didn't want restrictions.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl. Uh, and we had Donna. Does she still have her hand raised?
Uh, she does not. Uh, she does not. Mark, Mr. DeYoung?
Hi, everybody.
Hey, Mark. How are you?
Good. I just want to make sure this is clear in my head, so just clarification. So it's my space money can take care of paying for the roof on the um Spackman Farm house and no dollars come out of our tax dollars? Is that what I'm reading or?
Roof count is open space?
Yes, what's an open space environment, yes.
So not a penny more out of our pockets.
If that's the way the board goes, yeah, yes.
Well, it sounds good.
Thank you, Mark.
Cheryl, do you have your hand up again?
No. I put lowered. Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, there you go. Oh, it's back up. Okay. And and Donna had her hand raised earlier. Is she still online?
She's on, but she doesn't have her hand raised.
I had to say something here.
Donna, did you want to say something?
Up and over, okay.
And just a a last point, just thank, thanks to Abby for, you know, all of these um projects, you know, the Wild Meadow, that that's gonna be an amazing thing. You know, the the thought of the master plan and, you know, um being our point person for all these parks, so uh just a thank you to her.
Yes, thank you, Abby.
Thank you, Abby.
Thank you, Abby.
And and what day was that? Wild Meadows?
Twenty-second.
October twenty-second. What day is that? October twenty-second.
One to three.
Everyone.
One to three.
One P M.
Rocktober. I I have a note here. Donna De Prinzio's mic isn't working. I believe she just wanted to thank us for appointing her.
Okay. Thank you, Donna. Alright, uh, last, we have a request for consider consideration of a release from employment for Ashana Fix. Did I sound like? Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions on this? Now entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Quest is granted. And moving on to public comment. We we have Tony in the audience here.
Coming up the bypass the other day. When are they, when are they starting that, Josh?
What are we talking about?
You mean the renovations in the bypass?
Yeah.
Uh, like twenty thirty?
I think twenty twenty-six is Airport Road. Twenty, I believe twenty twenty-six is Airport Road.
Yeah, they're starting at the far end and moving uh east. So our section, I think, was twenty thirty.
Yeah, it's that, yeah. It'll come faster than you think, though.
Tony, we might not even be here by.
Uh, Chris Parr has her hand up.
Oh, yes, Chris.
Hi, Chris.
Just have to unmute. Still looks muted. Any luck? Still nothing here on on our end, Chris? But you are welcome.
Tom knows how to fix it.
Oh, there's Tom. Tom has his Android. Yes, Tom.
Uh, can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay, I have no voice, but Chris just wanted to say thank you for the appointment and looks forward to working with everybody.
Fantastic. Welcome aboard.
Looking forward to it.
Yes.
Alright, thanks again.
Alrighty. You have something else? Sure.
I'll get it. Don't worry about it, Tom. I'll get it at the end, yeah.
And he already threw it to the ground once already. Any other public comment?
Not at this time.
Woo, wow. Awesome meeting. I appreciate everyone chiming in. Uh, excellent conversation. So uh if there's no other comments, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, second, third, fourth, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night. Thanks, Tony.